We have here, uh, we have a quorum. We have Tina Munia Barnes, Jesse Luan, Judy Wampet, Vice Acting Speaker Calvo, Senator Palacios, Senator Frank Blas, and Senator Simisou. Sen- Senator Simisou, I want to wish you, on behalf of the, of the legislature and the staff, a happy birthday today. And may God help you in everything you do, and be prosperous, and have a good fun racing tonight. Okay, Tina Munia Barnes was saying happy birthday.
(singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear. Happy birthday to you. Bless you, may the dear Lord bless you. May the dear Lord bless Dave. Happy birthday to you.
Yeah, may, may the force be with you, son. And now we are back into the budget. And as I, um, senators, listen. Uh, senators, this is, let me go through the rules again. Now that we, they have explained the revenues, um, the people from the office of Senator Calvo and the administration are meeting right now in terms of looking over, you know, the revenue. But I will open up the floor now for, for every senator to have five minutes in talking about whatever part of the budget that you want. Talk about the page one, the page ten. The only thing you cannot do is make an amendment. Okay? That's on the general question, a general, uh, comments. About the budget. Senator Wampet?
Okay, uh, it makes it a little bit difficult, uh, I guess, to talk about a dollar amount since we haven't heard the side from, you know, the, the governor's, the administration's side. So, I mean, who's going to be answering any of these questions if we're going to talk about any specific amount on specific sections or on any chapter? I mean, it doesn't make any sense, is what I'm trying to say, uh, for us to even discuss this if there's no one to address this. I mean, we can pre- ask you the questions. You're sitting up there alone, but, and I know you're not going to attempt to answer any of these questions that we have. So I really don't see any sense to, for us to speak for five minutes or ask any questions other than to just hear ourselves speak.
Okay, you got your five minutes. Uh, Julie, um, can you, can you call up the speaker? Okay, uh, recess. Okay, uh, let me just clarify, the, if, what we, where we are now is that you have the budget in front of you. You can talk about the bill as it's presented. You can talk about page ninety-five, under eighty, or three, the page three, three, three hundred. Uh, the point is that, what is your observation? And then you, the question and answer comes later on when we go section by section. And the first section would be, of course, the general provision, which is chapter one. Now, do we have anybody that wants to talk, you know, general comments about the bill? Okay, Senator Adolf, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, this bill, uh, substituted by the committee, uh, present, uh, a very good plan at this point. Uh, I hope that we can improve this as we go section by section, but, uh, for example, uh, it provides for a reasonable, uh, projected revenue. Uh, we're working on that now to smooth that out, so it has that part. It also, uh, provides for some borrowing authority, not the two-hundred-and-fifty-million, but nevertheless, it's very substantial. That's very important that it should be included. It provides, of course, for the regular COLA payment. Uh, it recognizes, of course, uh, the fourteen points of the Department of Public, uh, Public Education Systems that, you know, we have to deal with that. So overall, uh, as it is right now, uh, it can only be made better. Uh, and I, I, of course, I am very satisfied that we will start this session, this budget session, with Bill forty-three, one-four-three, as amended, of course, or as substituted by the Committee on Taxation and Commerce. And that's what I like with this bill. I support this bill, of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Senator Acting Speaker, uh, Calvo.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Can you change the sign in front of you?
I know, uh, yeah. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, to rehash a little bit of what I mentioned yesterday. You know, Bill one-four-three is, is the fruition. It's the fruition of, of, of a bill that was sent over to us by the Governor of Guam that dealt with issues such as the operations and funding the operations of the government of Guam for the next upcoming year. The governor also, in Bill one-four-three, had, in connect, uh, tied into it a deficit elimination plan that he made use of a vehicle of borrowing, borrowing to two-hundred-and-sixty million, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars to pay for long-term obligations. Bill one-four-three incorporates some of the major initiatives by the administration, but it also incorporates the testimony that has been provided in our hearings and around table discussions over, over these many months. It incorporates some of the issues in regards to just the operations of FY two thousand eight government, uh, spending. It takes into consideration the testimony made by different department heads, as well as the administration in funding their operations. It takes into account some of the concerns the administration had on long-term obligations and some of the obligations they have now as a result of court-ordered, uh, mandates or consent decrees that have been put out or statutes that we've enacted into law, such as the fourteen points of education. So there is a borrowing portion to this bill, not to the extent of what the administration requested, but borrowing that allows us to deal with some of our long-term obligations, some of our court-ordered mandates, and some of the statutes that we've enacted into law, such as the fourteen points. But it does it without having to recalculate through statute our debt ceiling. We currently have a debt ceiling. This amended bill keeps us within that debt ceiling with no necessity to have to decide on that major policy decision. Do we change the valuation, a percentage of, of real, of property, uh, taxation here, uh, property values here in order to raise a ceiling? This bill ensures that we don't have to come to that point. It also incorporates, again, funding to ensure that we give the Guam Public School System necessary resources. Some of them are one-time, uh, obviously one-time payments for CapEx and capital, uh, improvements to get our facilities in the Guam Public School System up to speed so that we can make the fourteen points. Some of them are for court cases that, again, the administration and the Governor of Guam are, are obligated to fulfill. And whether it's the permanent injunction or the consent decree. One thing this bill differs dramatically with the administrations, nowhere here is there any proposal or any provision to change our current tax structure moving forward upward. Over these many, many weeks, when the governor's bill first was sent over to us, actually many months, there has been an outcry from the public of what the possible repercussions were, would be if we were to effectuate a tax policy change in unison with what the administration proposal was. I want to compliment and thank my members of the minority that introduced legislation that has been enacted that will deal with looking at our tax policy, evaluating it, and, uh, and then coming with proposals to the administration. My five minutes has run out, but I will say that we have language in there that would allow this tax commission to make those necessary proposals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Judy Wampet?
Thank, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd make this quick. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I know last year, I mean, well, not last year, actually. It was this year. Seems so long that we've been working with, with the budget, uh, all year. And, and one of the things that was brought up was, um, a report, the reporting requirements for all departments and agencies in which they're supposed to file, uh, their reports, either in writing, of course, or, uh, through the websites. And then there was a clause there, a penalty clause, uh, that, you know, we debated for some time. And, and in reviewing, of course, uh, again, the bill in Chapter Two, Part Six, and the miscellaneous provisions, and throughout the bill, basically, uh, it calls for the same requirements, uh, you know, that they must, uh, report this within a certain timeframe. But the one with the most puzzling thing, of course, is that there are no consequences. So what this section really has no teeth. I mean, other than the fact that, okay, we would like for you to report this. It is going to be mandated, but if you don't, then nothing, nothing happens. And, you know, that's a section, of course, on page twenty-three that I saw, uh, when I asked the question, what is, uh, are the consequences? Nothing, because failure of any official board to give notice required by the previous two subsections shall not affect the deappropriation or remittance of funds mandated by the section. So, I mean, seriously, I, this is something maybe, maybe less, uh, um, verbiage on, on the bill, maybe? Because if it's not really going to do anything, then I really don't even see anybody, uh, adhering or abiding by this particular section. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and Mr. Chairman.
Any other speaker? Senator Simisou?
First of all, Mr. Speaker, uh, the rules of engagement is, this is just a general comments, uh, uh, at this point in time, before we go into the, uh, to the budget. Since it's a general comment, I want to thank my, uh, you, um, uh, Mr. Speaker, and the rest of my colleagues, and also in particular Senator Frank, uh, Lozantina, for wishing me and singing, uh, a happy birthday. As, as we all know, it's, uh, every day is a present, you know? Uh, from the Lord's, I also, uh, want to give thanks to, uh, our dear Lord in that area. And I hope also that our dear Lord will guide us through this budget process and will guide us in, in, in a fashion that will not take us nine weeks like what had happened in the past. Uh, one of the things that is, uh, of paramount, uh, um, concern, um, is a bill that I called the Chinsuli Bill that is co-sponsored by Rory Rispeju, uh, Senator, uh, Gutterts, uh, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, and Senator Adolf Palacios, uh, at, the sponsorship are, are those individuals that were able to get that day in order to, to introduce the bill to be in time for, for this session. And, and Bill, uh, one-sixty-eight, um, is, um, a, a bill that some people have said it's, uh, uh, the, um, uh, twin of, uh, the governor's request for a bond borrowing. Uh, while it may be a twin, uh, it is not an identical twin. Uh, it, it, it's very different. It has its own character, its own personality, and its own way of addressing. Earlier yesterday, uh, Mr. Speaker, this body had said, uh, uh, no, uh, at least in this bill, to, to tax increases. We said no to, to, uh, increases in fees. Um, hopefully, uh, the body will allow me and my other colleagues to, to put in an amendment on, uh, to substitute the, uh, version here on the bond borrowing, uh, that is in the revised budget to accept, uh, the version on, that is articulated in Bill one-sixty-eight. What that does, what we've, what we've said earlier is no to tax increases, but this bill will say yes to tax refund. Yes, to be able to get two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars out into the economy, putting it in the hands of, of, of the taxpayers. So I, I hope that when we get to that section, we will be able to, to allow the, um, the amendment to go through. Um, I had asked the, uh, the good speaker to conduct a public hearing, uh, but as we, uh, on, on Bill one-sixty-eight so that we can get the input of, input of all of the people, those that are for, against, or, or, or needs to be educated on just, uh, what are the provisions of, uh, the, the Bill one-sixty-eight. Basically, what it does is to, uh, pay out the, uh, income tax on the COLA and to put that two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in the hands of the people. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any other senator that want to speak on just general comment on the bill itself? Senator Luan?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and happy birthday to, uh, again, Senator David Simisou. Happy birthday. You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I, um, I have to reiterate, uh, my stance, as I did since the twenty-seventh Guam Legislature, and my stance on, on borrowing. Even in the substitute version, Mr. Speaker, I have, I have a bit, a great problem with, with the ninety-million-dollar component of, of borrowing, let alone what the governor had transmitted of two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars borrowing. Mr. Speaker, we have said no to raising of income taxes, but in our in attempts to, to borrowing components, the only way that this government can pay back such huge borrowing would be to continue to raise taxes. We've seen the actions of the body over the, this past year in regards to raising of fees. We've asked the questions, what is the methodology in the, in which these fees are increased? And there was no methodology. I have, I have a bill to roll back these fee increases. I'm waiting for it to be heard. I'm going to attempt to, to put it in, in, in this bill as well, to, to roll that back. I'm, uh, I continue to, to sit and, and listen with, with an open mind and to be convinced by my colleagues, uh, on provisions. This will be day two of our budget liberation. Day one didn't, did not convince me. But I'll sit in day two with an open mind again into the, the different borrowing schemes and the amounts of borrowing schemes. But I remain steadfast in, in my beliefs that, again, in the body's attempt to borrow, be it ninety million, two-hundred-and-fifty million, we will have to pay for this. And if the revenues don't go up, then we would have to increase taxes, which I would have nothing to, to do with. I have found in, in, um, trying to make some discoveries prior. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. My time is up.
Uh, yes, Senator Ben Panglinen? General comment?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. You know, number one, of course, generally is that, uh, we're expected to, um, to review this budget, at least on the one presented and adopted yesterday with, uh, basically one-day notice. You know, I've, I have notes on the governor's submission, uh, on Bill one-four-three, which I've taken the time to, uh, go through and review. And, um, I had some comments on that. And I think some of the comments may be relevant to, uh, to Bill one-four-three as substituted by the Committee on Economic Development and Finance. And, um, some of the assumptions, basically, are, are, are under the same, uh, provision, you know? Um, it, one assumes that all the increases in fees are in place intact, and there's no, um, adjustments made to that. Even those fees that, uh, I think people agreed to may be onerous. Um, all the statements that were made when those fee increases were put in, um, that would hamper and damper economic activity and economic growth, uh, continue to be contained in this bill. I don't see any changes in that. We talked about, um, the, um, multi-location assessment on taxes for business license as something that was not envisioned and never contemplated by this body. Uh, from what I can see, continue to exist in this bill, even though all public pronouncements, uh, both direct and indirect, as in hin, hin, wink, wink, uh, to the media, uh, that we were going to roll those back or reconsider those, uh, have not been reconsidered. They are, they remain within this. So the good chairman has not sought to, um, to come through with regards to the review of that, uh, of those issues. The assessment on the land transfer tax continues to be, uh, in the bill, I guess, because the revenues remain the same. Um, so I'm concerned about those, uh, issues, Mr. Speaker. The, um, expenditure of this government, uh, rather than, uh, retracting or contracting, uh, uh, continue to increase, uh, and I don't see any, um, changes in those. Uh, there may be one, a couple of areas where they've decreased, uh, but they've decreased in the wrong area. They've decreased in, uh, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, for example, which, um, we understand needs the money in order to be able to collect the revenues. Uh, if we are going to try and fully capture the leakage that occurs with military construction contracts, then this opens the faucet wider or provides a bigger drain rather than putting in the drain stop because there is no additional resources to the Department of Revenue and Taxation for that purpose. Uh, there may be additional resources, but none beyond the current resources today that what we had given them in additional resources last, uh, budget. So I, I, uh, like I said, uh, the bill was passed out yesterday. Uh, I'm not a member of the committee, so unfortunately, I'm not privy to the, um, deliberations that have conferred on the committee level with regards to some of these numbers. I've asked for the revenue projection model that's been used. I can't believe that we've had a revenue projection model out of the Office of Finance and Budget for two years, and nobody knew about it. I mean, can you believe that, Mr. Speaker? That we actually developed a revenue enha- uh, projection model over the last two years, and they decided that they were going to keep it, uh, to themselves? That's just incomprehensible, Mr. Speaker. And they spent, or at least the good chairman has spent two-hundred, three, a million dollars over the last two years in that budget, and decided to keep it secret. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Uh, you know, my, my, my experience of being elected back since, um, nineteen-seventy-seven, uh, Ben, I've, I've seen a budget thicker than what we got right now. It got passed in ten minutes.
I think we both saw the same budget, Mr. Speaker, and we both had the same objections at that time.
Yes. Uh, thank you. Now, do we have any more comments, general comments, Senator Judy Wampet?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Are we supposed to sit down? I'm not used to sitting down. I don't want to sit down because I want to be respectful to the, to the chair. Uh, Mr. Chairman, good morning, morning colleagues. We are in, we are living in interesting times on Guam. But one thing that I think we can all agree on is there's a lot of misinformation about what this legislature does. Over the last couple of days, I have heard, uh, misinformation disseminated in the media about various bills this legislature is working on, including the budget bill, including the various COLA bills, and other matters that lay before us. And I'm very, very concerned about it. Because as you know, in a democracy, we depend on our media to disseminate information to the public so that the public can generate their views and opinions and debate those views and opinions and communicate those views and opinions to their policymakers and to their leaders. But, uh, one thing I wanted to emphasize this morning, since we've been given this opportunity to share some ideas with each other and the colleagues, is to find a way, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, to better clarify information that is disseminated, uh, to the public with reference to what this legislature does. Also this morning, I wanted to make an appeal, if I could. Mr. Speaker, I'm holding in my hands all of the bills that I've introduced since we took office in January. And I'm sad to say that very few of these bills have had a hearing. And I really don't understand why. For example,
Is it, this is, uh, relevant to the?
This is very relevant, absolutely relevant.
Please, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to impress upon the leadership of the legislature, the necessity to follow the rules that have been adopted in our own handbook, which requires that bills have a hearing within a specific number of days. One of the bills, I think it's important to, uh, bring to the attention of the legislature, are the education bills that I have introduced with some of my colleagues. The first bill was to reflect a holistic approach that education on Guam encompasses grades K through sixteen rather than just K through twelve. The purpose of this bill is to ensure that when we think about education, we think about education in terms of the public sector from the first time a student comes into the school system, which is in kindergarten, until they graduate from college. We need to connect these together to ensure that the monies that we are dedicating to our educational institutions are used wisely and reinforce the mission of the three educational institutions that this government funds, our public school system, our university, and our community college. Is that a telephone?
It's, the, your time is up.
Would someone like to yield?
No, there's no healing right now.
Okay, well, Mr. Speaker, let me sum up. I would like to appeal to the chair and to our acting speaker. I've been very patient these last few months. These bills need to be heard.
I suggest that you refer to, um, the minority leader, who's the acting chair now of the Committee on Education.
Well, I've already spoken to the minority leader, but many of these bills rest in other committees.
Thank you.
I prevail upon your leadership, Mr. Chairman. Let's be fair in this legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, okay, Mr. Senator Tina Munia Barnes?
Sidus Ma, say, uh, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak on the general, um, aspect of this bill. Um, again, Mr. Chair, it's really important as we go through this, uh, bill process, that we remember the functions of what our government needs to do to provide for our community. And it's really important, as we look into the health, safety, education for our, our, um, community, it's important that we make sure that the monies that are going to be expended will not be, uh, utilized or used for operations, like, for example, funding down in the south for, um, the proposed landfill when, um, when the government hasn't, um, acquired said property. And I bring that to the forefront because as I look at the budget and look at what is being allotted, I want to make sure, Mr. Chair, that the funding provided, uh, for the certain agencies that operate, um, funds for solid waste and operations and highway funds, that those funds be explicitly detailed and that we know that if the funds are gonna be utilized, uh, for any certain project, that, that we have full accounting. And definitely not to be used, uh, uh, for, um, projects that this policymaking body has not afforded. And you know, as I was briefly looking, Mr. Chair, there are some other factors. I know that, uh, as we look at the education, I see that on the revised, uh, budget, there are some, uh, increases. And I'm just wanting to make sure that, um, that those agencies, uh, are, that have been, money has been taken away from them, that we take a careful look, that none of the mandates from those agencies, that funding has been taken away, especially like agencies from the mayors and, and, like I said, education, safety, and health, that those fundings, uh, if, uh, their mandates are not violated in any way. Uh, again, we, we look at our government, uh, as it was in the past, as compared to today. I understand there is a decrease in, in, in government employees. Uh, and, uh, we just gotta make sure, Mr. Chair, that the, that the mandates for each of the government agency that we have today that exists to provide services for the community is, is, is taken with, uh, with the greatest, uh, regard, that those mission mandates are, 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 are followed and that it will be for the best of our community. So I continue to work closely with my colleagues to look at all the provisions and all the, the finances that are given to each agency and with some regard, but, uh, hopefully, uh, we can come up with a, a, a very positive, uh, resolution in this, uh, uh, financial situation so that our community at the end will be, um, it will be for the best for our community. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me that opportunity to speak, uh, this morning. Si, duas maos. And again, happy birthday to my colleague Senator Shimizu. May you have a wonderful day and may God continue to always bless you. God bless, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Let me see, uh, anybody else that wanna speak on, uh, the general comment? If none, we will now get into the Chapter One, Section One. Okay, can we, we have the, uh, people from the administration here?
Mr. Chair, can we take a one-minute recess while we call the, the parties in? Cause I don't see anybody coming in right now.
Yeah, one-minute recess is granted. He has revised with the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce, and Economic Development. Uh, okay, and act to make appropriation for the operation of the executive legislative judiciary branch of the government of Guam for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand eight, making other appropriation, enacting miscellaneous administrative provision. I don't think there'll be any objection on that. The enactment clause, no objection. Now we are in Chapter One. Uh, it's a general provision. Any, any, uh, any objection, Chapter, Section One? No objection. Now we're in Chapter, no, Section Two of Chapter One. Estimated revenue for fiscal, fiscal year two thousand eight. Do I hear anything? Huh? What? Senator one? Yeah?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before we started, uh, this morning, I understand from the, uh, the chairman and the committee basically said that the administration were actually working with OFB to, to look at their numbers. So now my question then to them is that, has there been a reconciliation of, uh, the numbers and the formula of OFB?
Senator, Senator one, but just for a second, okay? I just want to explain. By the way, you know, we have a five-minute limitation here, which means that whatever answer that you're, uh, giving back to whoever the senator is, that minute is gonna be counted on that center. So keep your, uh, answers as short as possible, but clear. Okay, I am not counting your, your time.
Okay.
Okay, Senator one, but go ahead.
So I should start all over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier before we had, uh, started, the, the chairman of OFB had basically made a comment that, uh, the administration were working with the OFB staff and they were looking at their numbers versus the model that was developed. So my question then, uh, is that have, are there, uh, reconciliations with the, the numbers, uh, from, from both sides?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry, Senator, could you just repeat the last part of your question?
Have, have you reconciled your numbers, uh, on your revenues, uh, with that of OFB based on the model that they've developed?
Uh, yes, we did. Uh, I, I had the opportunity, uh, Bernie invited me, uh, earlier this week and I had the opportunity to, um, uh, get a briefing on, uh, the model that was presented here yesterday. And at that time, we did reconcile the numbers and, um, you know, the, okay, he's, um, I'm just reminded that I have a short period. I am, in the end, I, the difference was less than one percent. I, I, at the, the bottom line, the methodology that they're using, as well as, uh, uh, the theories applied, I feel are acceptable. And, um, you know, there's no exact science to, to, uh, projections. Uh, anybody can have a different methodology and, um, all of which may be plausible. It's just, um, you, if, if, I think what we need to look for, what I was looking for is what degree of variance between our methodology and theirs. And to me, it was negligible.
So would, are you then willing then to, to accept both these, uh, revenue projections then for, for us to continue to proceed?
As, I, yes, as far as, uh, the substitute bill is concerned. However, I just wanna qualify that, um, I am also, um, not, I also want to continue to say that I, I still, I'm still here to support, uh, the governor's, um, uh, revenue projection and his revenue enhancement, which is not in the substitute bill.
Any other speaker, uh, Senator Rory Rispicio?
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, the, uh, oh seven budget process, uh, we had, um, although it was difficult to come back, I believe, uh, three times to come and amend the current budget, uh, we also had opportunities to adjust the, uh, revenue projections, uh, every single time. And in the latest, um, site round goabout that we went, uh, we had an opportunity to revise the revenue projections for, uh, oh seven, having, I believe, um, eight months' worth of actual collections. Could the administration very quickly, cause of, uh, the basis by which these revenues are projected really is on the basis of actual cash collections, actual past collections? Could you just give us a very, I guess, an update, um, Bertha, on how we are with our actual collections versus, uh, what's being projected, uh, by the Office of Finance and Budget?
You got three minutes.
Senator, when you, when you, uh, referred to actual cash collections, we're talking tracking for the current fiscal year.
That's correct.
So I'm not sure that, uh, you want to discuss that in relation to the oh eight revenue projection because, uh, there are two different things. But, but if you just want an update of where, how we're tracking, uh, we're tracking in the area of, um, about four thirty-seven of, uh, normal, uh, projected, uh, the normal experience of revenues. And when, then after you factor in, uh, such anomalies as, um, I, uh, what was discussed during the revenue hearings, uh, in this hall about a month ago, I, uh, it comes to about, we're, we're tracking about four ninety-two as of the July actuals.
And, and, and then, and then the revised revenue projection was four ninety-six?
Yes.
Yes. So, and could, the, uh, area of concern I have is on the, uh, departmental charges. And if, if, uh, sometime during the day, you could give us a breakdown of what we're tracking per category versus what's being projected? Uh, I wanna focus, uh, the balance of my time on these, um, federal sources. I know that the, um, Office of Finance and Budget, uh,'s projections versus the administration's projections is about four million variance. Could, aren't these reports generated by the administrat- by the local government? And, and then given to the RRS and then that money is fronted? And then, and then, and in some course of, uh, due, in due course, those reconciliations are made? That's why we're seeing, um, forty-some million, forty-one million here in the substitute version versus upwards of fifty-six million dollars that we usually get. Your number is substantially different from OFB's numbers. I think this is one area where I'd be more inclined to go with, uh, the number in the original Bill one forty-three versus the one in the substitute version.
Well, I, I'm not gonna answer for, uh, uh, OFB, uh, you know, that would not be fair. But I can say that with federal sources, there are only three subcategories in federal sources. And that is, um, at least in, um, how it is, uh, reported, uh, out of DOA and their comparative statement of revenues monthly, is, um, Section thirty, indirect costs and immigration fees. If you're talking about, uh, ACTC, that is recorded under income tax. Now, I understand that-
Advanced Child Tax Credit.
Additional, yeah.
Additional Child Tax Credit.
Now, I understand-
Go ahead, finish what you have.
I understand that the difference between, uh, I, OFB and my federal sources is a, an aggregate of about four million. Uh, that's, that's, uh, what I understand. But, um, I would just say that, um, our projection of forty-six was initially, initially came in at forty and, uh, that was, uh, with my predecessor, Carlos Perdallio. And when I reevaluated the revenues upon taking the helm, I concluded that, uh, the areas of indirect costs and immigration fees were understated. And so, uh, in the revised oh eight budget that the governor presented, uh, I presented the six million dollar adjustment, which is the difference between the forty and the forty-six that is in Bill one forty-three.
Thank you.
Just, cause it's, it's, cause this new, um-
I'm sorry, Mr. Senator Rispicio, your time is up.
Um, I don't think this, uh, rule is gonna be very efficient. I'm, I don't mean to belabor certain issues, but-
I, I, I know, but, um, we, we already said this rule yesterday. You agreed with it and, uh-
Okay, I hope other colleagues will pick up on this, um, on my thinking.
That's the reason for this. I, and you have a very good point though. Okay, on, uh, uh, let me see. Let's have everybody, uh, anybody more on the, uh, general revenue, general fund revenues? Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, Ms. Duenus mentioned immigration fees. Could you please clarify what that is? Is that the H-two, uh, processing fee for working on Guam? Did you mention, I thought I heard immigration fee?
Senator Guthers, um, the immigration fees are those fees that are collected through the US, uh, passport office and that, uh-
Okay, so this is, uh, uh, the processing of passports? Is that what you mean?
I'm sorry, US Immigration, uh, Office.
Oh, that is reverted to Guam?
That's correct.
Have we been receiving those monies?
Yes, we have.
Can you give us an idea, uh, what they're like?
Those immigration fees are, uh, already appropriated. Half goes to the public library and half goes to revenue tax.
Okay. But, um, are we actually collecting everything we should be collecting from the federal government with reference to these fees?
Uh, in the past, uh, couple of years, there's been an increase of, uh, fees being collected because it was discovered that, uh, the fees that were, um, being paid, uh, somehow were, were not coming to Guam and that's been, that, that error was, uh, discovered. And since then, we get, uh, quarterly, uh, written reports and, and details of these fees that, and they are coming to the government of Guam now.
Okay, I would appreciate it if you could give us some information on how much we've collected over, let's say, the last few years since this has been resolved. I think it's important for us to know that. My other question, Mr. Chairman, is, um, with reference to the, uh, fees that are being collected by the Department of, or AHRD for the entry of H-two workers into Guam, do you know what they're charging? Are they charging a thousand dollars per head at this time?
I, I don't know the specific fee charges, Senator Guthers, and I don't have it with me.
Yeah, we would like to find out what that number is they're using, because we gave them the authority, uh, that they could charge up to a thousand dollars, but I'm not sure they're doing that. We'd like to know what they're doing, if you could get that information to us and how much they've collected over the last few months since, uh, that became law. Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Anyone? We are on Section Two. Okay? Uh, Senator Spodan?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My time's up?
Judy, congratulations, eh?
All right, let's, uh, wait, everybody's talking on my time. Actually, I have one question, uh, just, uh, as we go down this list. Uh, Senator Guthers, just talk about the federal sources. If you go down to the next item, use of money and property in terms of sources, can you just, uh, real briefly, in less than a minute, explain what that is? As a revenue source? Under item C?
I know it's been such a long time, yeah, yeah. Um, I, I did have some of that detail, uh, but I don't have them right now with me. But, uh, use of property and money, those are, um, miscellaneous, uh, charges. For example, um, uh, small, uh, earnings, maybe on just some of the, uh, small accounts. Um, uh, some rentals, but that's, those are all very, I mean, in, in total, I think that, yeah, they're even less than nine hundred thousand.
Right, well, I mean, under, uh, yeah, under the substitute bill, we have about, about, about nine hundred thousand, but then under, uh, the governor's bill, the original bill, it was three point two million. So there's a discrepancy of about two, two point something million. And I'm just wondering, why is there such a, I mean, to me, that's a substant- a substantial discrepancy.
Okay.
Senator, are you asking about the difference between, uh, one forty-three and the substitute bill as far as?
That's right, and basically there's a two million dollar discrepancy between what, uh, the, uh, OFB is, uh, tracking and what you guys are putting out there, the administration's putting out there. I was just wondering how you came up with that three, how do you come up with three million dollar figure? And then, you know, I guess I'm gonna have to find out. find out how we came up with the eight hundred-
Yeah.
Eight and a ninety-one thousand dollar figure, why there's such a big discrepancy. And, and it's a big discrepancy, even though, you know, when you look at other amounts, it doesn't seem that big. I mean, it seems to be within normal range, but then when you're talking about a fund that only has, uh, again, uh, a, a max of, of what you have is three point two million, and this is, uh, nine hundred thousand according to OFB, then that becomes a, a significant, uh, uh, difference.
Okay, um, in arriving at all of the, uh, category, uh, projections for all the categories as far as our projections are concerned, we use the, um, average of, uh, the growth of each category for the past three years, and then sometimes we apply some, uh, subjective, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, subjective, um, uh, assumptions. Um, in the area of, uh, mon- uh, use of money and property, we took only the two-year average because, uh, there was a thousand, over a thousand percent change in the fiscal year, uh, oh-five as compared to the previous year, and that's not reflective of normal activity. So, we took the two-years average, so that's simply how we came up with the, to that particular, um, projection, uh, Senator. The two-year average growth.
Is, is my time up, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
We're just breaking ground now. All right?
Okay, um, Senator Tina Munia Barnes.
No, no, that was general, uh, comments that we were on.
I guess, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you, uh, again. Um, just following up on the, uh, on the previous speaker's, uh, request, I'd, I'd like to add on, as I do see the, the major inconsistency in the use of money and property, uh, ran from the governor's office. If we're looking at just rental and some other amenities, I'd really like to know what the breakdown is and why the big change. Uh, I probably should use it to the chairman, the oversight chair, for that big difference, if, if I may.
Do you want Senator Kau to hear?
Well, because I just see that the governor's request, based on, 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 on the answer that Ms., uh, the director from DOA had mentioned, that it was just on rental properties and some other money stuff.
Senator Kau, will you hear to the question, Mr. Senator Barnes?
Sure, I will. No, no need to repeat again. And I want to caution everyone, remember we talked about the formulation of the methodologies? Again, we have weighted averages, uh, there's a, we, we arrived at a base rate, uh, on, 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 on collections in particular categories on both a ten-year plan and a five-year plan, a five-year model, ten-year model, plus the P E Vs. Now, obviously, there, with, with, in particular to the, the reason I bring that up, because there is a less than one percent variance in the, in the grand totals between our numbers, but in that particular category, we, there is more, we, we look at the ten-year model, the five-year model, and then we added on the P E Vs, and, and with that, there's been a consistency over the many years in that particular area. It's, unless, of course, there has been some major projects that we're not aware of, but again, this is based on ten-year, five-year, plus P E Vs, so it, it, there is, uh, again, a difference, and maybe that has to do with, maybe the administration has some other pending, some rental coming in that we're not, we did not, uh, foresee, but I can remind everybody that the bottom line is there's less than a one percent, uh, difference in, in our, uh, in our calculations.
Senator Barnes, is that sufficient? Because that's your time.
It's still, it's still, it's, it's still, just bothers me based on the, the numbering system.
Can I, and I, if I, just, just, again, further information, if you look at the past two years, we have been running at about the eight hundred to nine hundred thousand level. So, again, what probably has occurred, and I know these folks may not be aware of it, they ca- they may have gotten some information from, there may be something from Getca or some other government agency where there is an anticipation of a higher rental coming in in some sort of project.
The other concern I have, Mr. Chair, is on licenses, fees, and permits, um, if they can, if, if someone can just answer me, what, what the differences between, uh, line item D and line item E on the department charges, would that be from the different agencies and the license fees and permits would just be from rev and tax? If someone could just share the, the, explain to me what the separation of categories and what each is?
Your conclusion is, is, is correct, Senator Barnes. License fees and perm, license and fees are primarily the, uh, business license fee types of collections, uh, that are made at, uh, at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Department charges are those, uh, like maybe the, um, birth certificate, a copy of your birth certificate, your, uh, those types of, of five, ten-dollar fees that are charged at the department level. Those are, uh, are reported under, uh, letter E.
Yes, my time is up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Ben?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just have a question. I know we were saying that the, um, the difference in the, um, projections is about a one percent difference. The, um, the question, though, I have is, if I look at Bill one forty-three and I look at the total taxes of four hundred and forty-two million dollars, and I look at Bill one forty-three by the committee and the total taxes is four hundred and thirty-four million, you may say, okay, there's a maybe one percent difference. You know, two percent? It's actually probably, uh, closer to a two percent difference, but the revenue projection in Bill one forty-three, according to the governor, includes twenty-two million dollars in increased taxes. Now, if you factor, Bill one forty-three does not include twenty-two million dollar, uh, differ, uh, increase in taxes. So, if you add those increase in taxes, or subtract those increases in taxes, how do we get a ten percent growth, which is very close to a ten percent growth then, uh, in the revenues without those tax increases? Where and how do we justify that increase? Because you have to take out the twenty-two million in, in revenues, in additional revenues from the increase in taxes. That's not included in the four thirty-four, uh, and yet, um, you know, there's, there's that difference in, in, uh, the projections from four forty-two. So, the original projection, you could say, uh, in, in those numbers are absent the increases in taxes. So, can we kind of just get a feeling for, um, where those growths are gonna occur?
Are you taking only, uh, uh, total taxes? Total taxes, the four forty-two includes the revenue enhancements? Yes, it does, yes. Well, you know, Senator, I can't speak to, uh, speak to that. Yeah, I, I don't know. Uh, maybe the, maybe, you know, the good chairman can explain it.
Senator Kau to hear?
Uh, thank you very much. Again, and I thought the comparative was, was, was this given to the body? I, I, I will, uh, I thought this was presented by the, to the administration, and yesterday actually was provided in the, in the, um, uh, presentation by OFB, and I want to make sure I get a copies. When you talk about the, again, the base revenues, there was a less than one percent in rev, uh, discrepancy or, uh, difference between the bottom-line projection of OFB at four hundred and eighty-nine million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, and Bill one forty-three with four hundred and eighty-five million, three hundred and twelve thousand. Obviously, when you talk about, there were issues on, on the, uh, changes in tax structure as well as interpretations. How we go from, from, I, I get to, to separate it, again, based on what we presented yesterday, there was issue on the EIT settlement, which was eleven million, four hundred and ninety thousand. Now, that one was put in as reserve in, in Bill one forty-three as provided by the governor, and we considered it as an appropriation. There was, again, the repeal of tax exemptions at twenty-two million, and then the amendment of, to banks and financial institutions of four point five million, and the amendment to tax on tobacco and alcohol at four million, which equated to nineteen million, ten thousand. Now, when you get, add the revenue, reconciled revenue projections is put forth and comparatives between OFB and the administration, and then you add the nineteen million dollars, you get the five hundred and four million. I, I'm gonna provide a copy of this, uh, and I thought we did provide it, but I'll get it to, to, um, members of the body.
Thank you. Any other speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just make a, a motion at this time, then, to just amend the committee rules that were adopted, that everybody will get five minutes, uh, before a second round of hearing, of questioning. I, I really think that, you know, to ask one question, uh, and then have no other time available to discuss any additional, uh, matter, an issue, uh, maybe that, uh, you know, as Mason's provides, Mr. Speaker, that really in the committee as a whole, every member gets an initial round, and then you come back, and if there's time remaining, ad- members can come back for additional questions. So, I would, I would think that that would be a reasonable thing.
I, I, I do understand, yeah, it's in the Mason's rules. It's also in the Mason's rules as well.
That we adopt, unless otherwise adopted by the body.
Right.
Yes, I know, and so I'm asking the indulgence.
Uh, for fairness, and I, I, I felt that, yeah, there's certain clarification that needs to be done, I would add on, you know, after everybody speak, uh, any further questions on the, uh, bill, but you will not exceed, exceed the, you know, the five minutes. If you have any more additional question to clarify, then I would allow for the second round of questioning.
And could you, and could we also amend that, Mr. Chairman, to say that part of the five minutes doesn't include the responses?
After everybody speaks first, okay?
But, but that, that, that part of the five minutes does not include their responses?
Yes, they do include the responses.
Because if they don't want to respond to a question, they could just keep flipping their papers.
I'm sorry. But their time, so us, and you know that, you don't have to give their time to you, to them.
But I'd like to be fair, Mr. Chairman.
I'm being fair. Everybody has to, you know, go through the same thing.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about the procedures as well in which we're doing this? Is that, I, I know we're going chapter by chapter, section by section.
Right.
And if you look at Section two now, there are different, uh, subcategories, like, for example, will we then be able to, uh, go through, let's say, income taxes?
As, as I can see it, everybody is jumping from one area to another.
Right, so that's what my, no, my question now is, is that, would you then take the lead to say then that the very first thing we're gonna talk about now is income taxes, and then we go and, and, and finish that, and then go on to the next section?
Now, we, we're going on Section two as a whole.
You're right, but I'm not making myself clear. Uh, Section two, you're right, and then, uh, on general fund revenue, specifically taxes, A. That's what I'm saying. Then, when we're done with that five minutes, you're right, then we go down to B, five minutes.
Uh, no, the, 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 the rules that, that we pass is Section two, which includes all the way up to Section four.
But, but Mister, Mister, Mister Chairman-
And up to two, no, uh, five. Okay, uh, you have every right to question anything. You have another five minutes left of the second round.
What I'm trying to say, Mister, Mister Chairman, is that when you really look at this particular section, section two, I mean, we're talking about three, four pages, and it's just two, there's so much information that we're not, we won't be able to do this in five minutes, but if we can break it down to subsection A on taxes alone, we go through the, the two rounds, and then when we're done with that, of course, then we move on now to B on federal sources. That's what I'm saying.
You know, if we were to compute all the five minutes and ten minutes, we're gonna be here for two months.
No, we won't.
Yes.
Because you know why? Some of them would ask the questions that would not necessitate other than asking questions.
Okay, let's, let's finish the round.
A point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman?
Stay at your point of inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How about when we get to the appropriations for all the executive branch, um, departments and agencies, that five minutes for all fifty-some of them? Whereas past practices, it was at least five minutes per, per department? Because just looking, just looking, um, prospectively here, we might run that problem again in this deliberation. So, you can, like, on page thirty-four, chapter four, is it gonna be five minutes for the entire?
Oh, Senator, we got staff to, to go over everything here that we need questions and everything. You know, you can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, let me see, any other Senator? We have Senator Pangolinan already, Senator Norio?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, um, my question deals with the, uh, federal sources in Section thirty. Um, the governor's bill, as was, um, commented earlier, has federal sources of forty-six, zero, five, seven, nine, seven, zero. We have forty-one, eight, eight, six, eight, oh, eight, oh, two. Um, it is a pretty substantial difference, and we are looking at a ramping up of military activity and military personnel presence, um, and other things that are associated with Section thirty. Um, would it be, uh, Bertha, would it be unfair or inaccurate to say that the, what will, let me ask first, what are we actually getting in Section thirty this year?
For fiscal year oh-eight?
Current year, this year. What are we estimated right now? Right now, this not, not the future, I'm talking about this fiscal year. What do we have an estimate on, federal sources?
Forty, forty million?
Forty. All right.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Fiscal year two thousand seven, fifty million is what we actually received.
This year?
Yes.
Do you expect less next year?
I'm sorry?
Do you expect less federal money next year?
Yes.
You do?
Federal, uh, Section thirty, and Art can explain why.
Art, please.
What happened last year was, um, uh, uh, the actual, uh, amount was forty-two, but when we went back to DC, we included, uh, uh, which we knew we were gonna receive, uh, fifteen million dollars in reserve, um, and other, uh, uh, fifty seventy-six, I think, Section sixty-seven, fifty seventy-four, which is employees who employ people in Guam but moved to the States. There's a, a ratio of, of refolding that we should be getting. So, all that added up to like, close to fifteen million dollars. Um, and that was included in the forty-two, so the average is about forty, forty-two that we're getting.
Okay, so then, um, if we're getting forty, forty-two, um, and this is forty-one, eight, let's call it forty-two, um, do you think then, Bertha, with the ramping up of military personnel, additional federal employees, et cetera, um, we're pretty much gonna be a status quo, um, in that area?
Yes.
You do?
For fiscal year two thousand eight, yes.
Okay, so then you expect, um, in the future, then, we'll be higher, but right now, we're pretty much gonna stay the same?
Yes, that's correct. That's, that's what I feel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on Section two. Anybody that has not spoken yet? Okay, I'm going in the second round. Okay, those that didn't speak in the first round is gone. Okay, Senator Judy Wampa, then Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, here are my questions, and listen very carefully, because I'm not gonna lose out my time. I need for you to explain to me, to us, the differences in the, um, uh, tourist attraction fund, why it's three thou- three million dollars more. That's one. Secondly, I also want to know why a large discrepancy with the territorial education facilities fund of twenty million dollars more than OFB. And then, those are two really large numbers, and if you can use your time now, the leftover of my time, to please explain the main differences of, you know, um, of the two.
Uh, on, on the real property, when we submitted the budget, we, uh, we were looking to borrow, uh, in the bond market, and what we did was we raised the tax value assessment from, uh, thirty-five percent to seventy percent, but we didn't, uh, just down the rates. So, of course, that would, uh, if you double it from, uh, thirty-five to seventy percent, it, it would increase the tax, um, tax due amount from the taxpayers. So, that was the, uh, the twenty million dollars. We're actually collecting twenty million dollars for real property tax, and, and, um, if you adjust the value on the tax, the, the, the tax was assessed value, uh, by doubling that, and you don't reduce the rates, then of course your taxes, um, would, would, uh, your revenues would, uh, increase by, by that amount.
And just, just briefly, in the G V B, um, the tracking of the committee has gone, you know, from twenty-three million dollars have gone down to twenty point seven, and this is for the last three years. So, we changed it down to twenty point seven rather than twenty-three million dollars that we usually put on the, uh, projected revenue.
So, so then, Mr. Chairman, since you were able to answer that question, then, is that, uh, then admin, basically, the additional three million, uh, I guess their numbers is not- uh, I guess their numbers is not the same from the same individuals you're getting their numbers from? So I'm trying to rectify the numbers here so that, uh, you know, we can then make better decisions. Uh, since I have another time, then the Safe Streets Fund, uh, there's a really big discrepancy as well from, uh, two thirty-six to one hundred, uh, thousand, uh, why the big discrepancy? And lastly, can you explain what the Better Public Service Fund is?
Can you, can you, um, put down the page and, and the line?
Page three, the line U, Safe Streets Fund, from two thirty-six, compared to the admin of one hundred thousand, and then go to the top of the line, Better Public Service Fund, seven hundred and forty-two thousand to, down to two hundred and twenty-three.
You know, we have two different, uh, bills in front of us that look very similar, and I'm flipping through, through pages, and now I'm mixed up. I think I put OFB's page two in mine, and, and so I'm not following. Uh, if you just, uh, Senator, just give me a moment to get my copies in order here, so I can follow your question.
So Mister Chair, then while you're right, I'm not speaking now, she is, and that means you'll be able to answer even though my time is up.
I'll, I'll, I'll call for a minute recess.
Here on, okay, go ahead, uh, I'm sorry. Um, what we, what we, how we calculated the, our side of, uh, um, our budget when it comes to the fees or our revenues, um, we look at, uh, the tracking, and then we increase it by a, a percentage, I, I believe it's four, four percent. So that's how we got our side of the, of, of, of our revenues, um, for, do you have the number?
Senator Wampad, are you listening?
What we do is, is based on tracking of the last, um, uh, uh, three years, I believe, three or five years, we have a tracking of what the fees are, and then with the, the increase in the fees that we, uh, passed last June or, or May, uh, that was factored in, and then what we did is we increased it by a, a, a four percent increase based on growth, and that's how we come up with our numbers for, for our revenues.
Uh, my understanding is that the Better Public Service fee was created for rev and tax.
Right.
Saying is what, what's the dollar amount, what have you already been receiving from, from that amount, that particular fund?
Oh, you want to know the number that we received, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I, I don't have that number with, it's something I have to get back.
Uh, your time is up, Senator, um, Judy. Uh, Senator Panglinan?
Right. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I, I mean, I, I think, um, you know, in conversations, going back to the original, I still think that we still have a thirty, thirty-four million dollar difference in the revenue projections, even accounting for, for this, these numbers here, so I'm a little, I'm still a little disturbed about that in terms of, of a sense of developing a comfort, uh, for those rev, the revenue projections and the difference. I think even if you're taking me from the bottom line, there's still a thirty-four million dollar gap according to my calculations, so I'm, I'm a little, uh, and that doesn't need a response, because otherwise that'd be the only question I'll be able to, to, to say. So I'm just saying my perspective on that. I take a look at this, Mister Speaker, and, and, um, for that, I have a question on this, um, on page six, section F, this six point two million dollars that is the short-term financing from section thirty funds, um, for this line of credit. My understanding, uh, pursuant to the Attorney General's opinion, was that that line of credit could be exercised, it would be legal, but it had to be paid from current year operational funds and current year revenues. So the fact that we're now taking this six million dollars from next year's revenues makes that line of credit illegal, according to the Attorney General's opinion, uh, when asked about that. So, is this to pay for the current six million dollars that the governor took from the line of credit when we proposed that it be used for COLA, and instead he went directly to it and used it for GPSS, which is not a bad thing also? Um, but still, is this that same revenue, and are we now paying this out from next year's revenues? I thought it was supposed to be paid from this year's revenues.
I, I, I would appreciate if you guys were to listening to, to the speaker, so that...
We, we are, we're discussing there, and so could you just turn the clock off?
I'm sorry.
Senator, it, it was my understanding that the, um, I, with regard to that short-term line of credit, the six point two that is in the budget, your question is, is this coming out, is the debt service for that coming out of two thousand seven? It's coming out of two thousand eight, section thirty funds. That's why it's in the budget.
Right, but the Attorney General's opinion said that you could only take that line of credit out, uh, if it was going to be paid from current year operation, uh, current year revenues. So if it was a two thousand seven line of credit, it should be paid off at the end of two thousand seven, using two thousand seven revenues, and not extended past the current fiscal year of which the line of credit was taken. And so, uh, I just wanted to know that this is for that, for this current line of credit that is existing?
For the, yes.
That was taken out in two thousand seven, we're now using two thousand eight revenues to pay for it.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
Because it was, uh, my understanding, uh, I was advised by the legal counsel that this, uh, the, the payment for that was, uh, is an allowable, is allowable under this, uh, section thirty for two thousand eight.
Okay, I'm just saying.
In her, in her opinion?
In her opinion, I'm saying that the Attorney General's opinion was, you could not increase the debt, and you could not do this if it was going to be paid from two thousand eight revenues. So there's a contradiction there between the two, uh, opinions, I guess. The Attorney General's opinion on this matter was that it had to be from current year operational revenues, and couldn't be deferred to next year. So I just wanted to, to state for the record that this line of credit is not, not a payment you're anticipating to take out for next year. It is for one that was already taken out.
That's correct, for the one that was taken out.
All right, so that will be something again that the Attorney General will have to take a look at.
I can get back to you, Senator.
Yes, could, could you?
For the clarification, I probably will contact the Attorney General and get from her clarification on her own, uh, statement.
Yes, and could you give me the copy of the legal counsel's opinion that said that we could do this from, and, and take it out of two thousand eight revenues?
No, I don't know that it was a written opinion, but I'll certainly get something in writing if that's what you want.
Yeah, please do that.
I think that would be, uh, appropriate.
Sure.
Senator Spisham?
Thank you very much, um, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, I follow the, um, thinking of the previous speaker, and, uh, although the variance is reportedly about one percent, I too believe that it's, um, it's, it's, it's more than that. Uh, the governor's bill has a five hundred four million dollar revenue projection, which accounts for all these, um, thirty and a half million dollars worth of revenue enhancements. So their baseline of the bill is about four hundred seventy-three million, whereas the OFB's revenue projections, uh, is four hundred eighty-nine, which we all know does not include, uh, any revenue enhancements. In the individual category alone, just doing the comparison, uh, OFB is recommending a two point nine million dollar, um, increase. In corporate taxes, it's one point two million, withholding interest and penalty, it's a huge spike, seven point four million. They, this substitute version does not account for, uh, eleven point four million dollars for EITC set aside. However, there's a proposal to do that from this, uh, bond borrowing. Uh, an area I'm concerned about is gross receipts taxes, and I don't expect the administration to answer, this is not their version. But although we're hearing claims from, um, OFB that the economy is picking up in gross receipts taxes, there's a decrease of a two million dollar, uh, uh, here from hundred eighty million that the administration's projecting, one eighty point nine to one hundred seventy-eight point eight, so I, I don't know if I need a response. Uh, just want, or rather a comment that we could clarify later, in the GRT is a two million dollar, uh, decrease. Then of course we have all the decreases because of the removal of the revenue enhancements. I'm still concerned about the, um, federal sources, uh, money and property is down two point three, uh, license and fees is up to nine hundred two thousand, and department charges of three hundred thirty-one. My question, uh, to the body then, would we then have an opportunity to reconcile? Uh, because I think it's great that, uh, OFB provided revenue projections, I commend, uh, Acting Speaker Cowell for doing so. I commend his Office of Finance and Budget for following the law that requires them to do this. I think it's a great start, and finally we have some kind of check and balances, I stated. But would we then, as a body, have an opportunity to reconcile, uh, the differences from both the administration and OFB? Because in some categories, like withholding, I think, um, I don't know, I don't want to pit one up against the other, but I would suspect that the administration would have concern with a huge seven point four million dollar, uh, increases. Is that the kind of, uh, activity we're seeing now? Then in the, within the GRT category, there's a two million dollar, uh, decrease, is that, does that kind of, uh, logic flow? So my question is, would we then have an opportunity, uh, to have these two entities come up with one solid number that the legislature as a whole can be more comfortable with? Mister Chairman, my, my time is ticking.
Were you asking me?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Um, let me, let me yield that question to Senator Cowell.
Well, my, my question is, for the body, would we have an opportunity?
Go ahead, go ahead.
If we would have an opportunity to have both entities, uh, reconcile the number, so we come up with one solid number, uh, for the body to be more comfortable with. There's, there's, there's huge spikes in various categories.
I, I think, uh, what is important to understand here, what is occurring now in how we discuss a bu, a bill that has been presented by the legislature, as opposed to a bill that has been presented by the administration. In years past, and of course there has been criticisms, in fact, even in the last revision for the budget bill, we accepted numbers as presented by the administration. And with that acceptance of the body of the revenue propo, uh, revenue projections, uh, there, we have moved forward, because again, in, in, in previous budgets, there was, and, and if Bertha can recall, there was a degree of variance of, um, again, understanding that there's a percentage of variance in projecting. And both OFB and the leg, and the administration, when we did compare numbers, there was the, uh, a reasonable degree of, um, of acceptance on projections that they fold within certain, uh, uh, limit, uh, what he calls either ceilings, or, or heights, or meet basically on averages. So with that, uh, there has been an acceptance by this legislative body. Moving forward into this particular bill, I think, I would think that the minority senator likes this. There are some differences in, and they're becoming very transparent, where there are models that are put forth by OFB, there have been models put out by the administration, we've had the ability to compare these models. In fact, some of the base models are, are, are similar, if not identical, but then of course there are other additions to it that OFB has put in, and of course it differ with, with the administration. I will provide, uh, OFB's, in fact, I, I thought we did, but I, I want to make sure that we give you the necessary information and how we came up with these numbers. Obviously, the administration also has their models, and they've been in budget hearings in pass, including on one forty-three where they presented their revenue projections. Uh, so there is a reconciliation, a reconciliation that's occurring, uh, where OFB is coming up with their, with their calculations and estimations, and, and of course the administration. Uh, there is, we're, again, we're moving towards acceptance of this revenue projection, we have accepted the, the bill, and if there is going to be a change in that, then of course we have the ability to make motions to adjust. But I do want to note, take note, that though we have differing models and different, different calculations, if you take a look at the, the, again, the bottom line numbers, and you take away the, the revenue enhancements, there is, uh, again, a less than one percent degree of variance between what the revenue projections are of the administration and of, uh, the legislature. So I hope that answers the question. I don't think we need to reconcile it, it is being reconciled now in, in full view of the, of the body, and there is full transparency.
Just, just a final thought, I appreciate that, uh, comment, Mister Speaker. But, and then I'm thinking then, that since we have a substitute version before us, our questions then should be posed more toward, uh, the Office of Finance and Budget than it is to the administration, because I would like for the administration to be put in a position where they're having to defend numbers that are contained in the substitute version, rather than numbers contained in bill one forty-three. So for, just for clarity purposes and moving forward, uh, maybe we, I'm not sure if we, since we're going to address a substitute bill, that I'm not sure if it's necessary to have the governor's representatives here. I'm not certain of that.
Thank you, uh, Senator Spisham. Any other, uh, speaker, uh, Senator Tino Munia Barnes?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I, 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 I just want to look over, um, um, section three, federal matching grants and aids in revenues. I see that, that...
Section three?
I mean, I, federal matching grants, page four? I'm just concerned, because I see, um, there's a spike from, from the governor's proposal on, 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 uh, law from three point six million, almost a two million spike to five point four. But then I also see that there's an additional, and I'm just, just for clarification sake, is the judiciary of Guam at three hundred ninety-five thousand, I just, I just wanted to know where that came from. And why it's not in in the, the, uh, governor's proposal.
Uh, perhaps, uh, OFB can answer that, um, it's not in the governor's proposal because, uh, it was not presented, I guess, to the bureau as, uh, grant an aid that they anticipate. So I don't know if Bernie has an answer for that.
I can yield, yes, obviously what, what occurred, the judiciary has brought their budget to the legislature, and there are monies and grants that have been identified by judiciary in their budget. And I, and I would suppose, especially since when the administration provide, uh, presented bill one forty-three, uh, to the legislature, they did not have all the, the details in, in, in agencies that were outside their purview. So I can understand why bill one forty-three as presented by the administration does not have that, because again, that was contained, uh, within the, um, the budgets of judiciary and, and in the information provided to the legislature, uh, in regards to federal, uh, grants and aid.
Any other speaker on section two, or? Yeah, if none, uh, Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, I'm looking at, uh, page three on line twenty-two, the Safe Street Funds for two hundred and thirty-six thousand. Now, who, who keeps record of these funds, uh, who maintains it? Is it the Department of Administration or the judiciary?
From, uh, judiciary, Senator.
So the one hundred thousand that's taken out of that funds?
I'm sorry?
How, how was that came about? The hundred thousand that's taken out of that funds, that, that's from that funds?
I, you're talking about page three, line twenty-one on the governor's bill?
Yes.
Uh, line twenty-one on the governor's bill, line twenty-two on the substitute bill? Uh, line twenty-one on the governor's bill, line twenty-two on the substitute bill? Uh, is two hundred and thirty-six thousand. I may just offer to the body that in the case of all special funds, uh, as well as the general fund with regard to BBMR's uh, revenue projections, the methodology used is as um, uh, the growth, average growth of the previous three years. Uh, that, and then that number was taken to uh, reflect the estimate for two thousand eight. I, yesterday, um, OFB presented their methodology. So I am really um, not very comfortable with answering questions regarding the difference. I think that the answer to the question is the methodology, and then it is up to the body to accept, which I guess methodology, they're more comfortable to accepting. But uh, with regard to the various, uh, the variances between the categories, among the categories, uh, you know, uh, I think, uh, I find it very awkward to be explaining variances when it's really a difference in the approach. And I just want to add that I, of course, we've been talking and depending, I guess, on uh, what I, the individual senses are, uh, it's less than one percent variance, less than five percent variance in every category, actually, except for the lower ten. We have ten percent of all other taxes that are really, I, in the big scheme of things, are in ins- are not that significant, not insignificant, but not as significant. Uh, those are the only ones where the variances are uh, wider. But we're talking about a million or two here and there. So that is why I am comfortable with the bottom line variance. And and that's why I I accept the overall bottom line. But I think that it's um, I am not in a position to explain the variances by category because it's simp- the explanation is simply the methodology.
Okay, may I, may I ask the chairman of the committee to elaborate, to follow up on that?
Senator Calvo, will you?
For clarification, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you very much. Again, just to, in order to answer the question, I understand Bertha, again, remember, Bill one forty-three was provided to us many months ago. When the legislature compiles not only the governor's budget, but uh, but I mean, the provided by the administration, but there are budgets that come from other entities such as judiciary. In per- in in particular to to item U on the Safe Streets Fund, that was information that the administration had garnered again from previous years. Uh, obviously, when judiciary uh, presents their information and their budgets to us, again, they they are basically handling this particular uh, funding source. So with them, the information that was provided to the legislature is more updated, and it's based on on obviously, the information provided by a, an autonomous agency that is in control of a certain account or fund. So again, some of these numbers that you have here, in particular to the Safe Streets Fund, it, um, these were information that were garnered through information provided by an entity such as the judiciary, in particular to this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any other speaker uh, for um, section two? If none, we're in chapter three now. Now the chair realize, okay, that as section one has a s- Where's Senator Spisham? Okay, has subsection A, subsection B, subsection C, sub subsection D, E, F, and... Okay, it's, but the the appropriation is on section one. So what I'll do is I'll give you five minutes recess, look this thing over, and then we'll continue on this chapter. We are, we are on page seven. Okay, uh, since section one has several subsections, but the appropriation is in section one. I'll give you guys five minutes, look it over. Okay, so we have, we'll take five minutes recess. Thanks. Okay, uh, the committee of the whole is back, and there's been a request that they want to bring in the uh, people from the Guam Public School System. And so they will be here at two thirty this afternoon, and we will then be recessed until two thirty. I'd ask the members, though, to please be here by that time because I'm going to start at two thirty exactly. Is that understood? So ordered. We are now on chapter two, part one, Guam Public School System, section one. I just want the body to know that section one has several subsections uh, all the way up to page ten. I think that the body do have the time to uh, review the subsection of section one. So Senator Wampat, you're recognized. On-
Thank you, Mister, Mr. Chairman, okay. For for section one A in particular, um, that that's a, a um, A is is different basically from from what was done in the past. Uh, there, we're looking at a hundred and seventy-three million dollars that we appropriated from the general fund uh, for the uh, the operations of the schools. Uh, what is is different here is that we're, it, you see two categories. One is a personnel for a hundred and seven, fifty-seven million dollars, and operations-
Senator Wampat, can you, can you hold on for a second? Okay, this uh, routine, home, how would I say, it's a house quip. Uh-huh. Guys, can you uh, just raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, nothing but the whole truth, through help you God? Okay, you did it. Judy, continue on.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, so the two, the two uh, areas that we have here is personnel for a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars and operations at fifteen point nine million dollars. Um, and I just, I I I would like to to ask then, the the superintendent, based on um, your salaries and benefits, I mean, I've done the calculation, but I wanted to to find out from you whether uh, if you take the total salaries of four point five million dollars and then the benefits of one point three million dollars, then your total would be five point eight million dollars. And then there are twenty-six paid periods. And at least in my calculations, it would show that it would come up to a hundred and fifty-one point six million dollars. And even with uh, a, let's say, a two percent increase, uh, and then hiring of substitute teachers, or you know, that the hundred and fifty-one point six uh, would be sufficient based on, I mean, even with uh, what is currently being appropriated at a hundred and fifty-one. Is is that something that, is is the figures that I just gave you um, correct? Uh, Mister Calvo, maybe, I don't know, or Mister Agee is better, maybe you first.
Senator, um, uh, my name is Louis Ragey, Superintendent of Education. The hundred fifty-seven billion dollars for personnel here uh, does not seem to be adequate based on, we don't have current right right now, the labor cost distribution. But based on our current spending level, uh, Mister Calvo has the figure here?
Yes, Senator, that's correct, as of pay period ending nine one. Uh, keep in mind, not all the uh, recruit teachers are in this pay period. A lot of them are still in, the paperwork's are still in in process. So this is correct as of nine one oh seven?
Uh, so that's at one fifty, see, the-
One fifty-one?
Yeah, the one fifty-one, one fifty-one point six. Uh, yeah, that's the figure that you were able to provide my office today. And and that's why I'm saying whether, because it's one fifty-one point six, uh, on the, you know, on the proposed budget, it's uh, at one fifty-seven point one. So there is, you know, an additional uh, six million dollars to take care of, uh, even like I say, even if it's a two percent increase, there it, there would be sufficient uh, monies.
Uh, if Mister Calvo is saying one fifty-one currently as of this pay period, then definitely the one fifty-seven should be sufficient.
Thank you, Mister Agee. Uh, on operations now, and this is a little bit separate, there's always been the concern that uh, among, you know, my colleagues, every time when we talk about monies that we we send out to appropriate for the departments, that we really would like to see the, in the other object categories, that the money really go into the classrooms, and we're separating, of course, personnel. And and to to assure that, uh, the recommendation was that for operations, we want to keep it at fifteen, then point nine uh, million dollars for operations, which of course, there are no limitations in terms of, at least not in the language here, that uh, there's any restrictions. That means you have the flexibility in those different object categories to to move the monies for operations, is?
I think that fifteen point nine should be adequate, you know, based on our spending pattern. Uh, Senator, if I may, you know, um, maybe it's just not in this bill, but there's something that I would like to request the legislature to to consider. Uh, business as usual is just not, you know, the way that we should be operating. We like to make some changes. Sometimes we need to have people in the right places. So I'm asking if the legislature will consider giving, you know, me the authority to assign people where their, you know, their their greatest strength are at. Um, because there has to be some kind of a change in order for us to make some significant changes in the department. So that is what I'm asking the legislature, to consider giving me some kind of a, an authority, you know, to be able to assign people where their strengths are at, so that um, because right now, there, we have quite a number of employees. But as the USDOE officials said, we seem to be having more and more people now in the right places. However, we're still not at that point where we can say, you know, people are actually in the right places. So I want to be able to have the authority to be able to have people assigned to where they'll be able to be more productive.
Can I ask another question, Mister Chair? Uh, at on on page nine, and 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 nine and ten, of course, and then one to eleven, these are are normally what we appropriate is three point five million dollars for textbooks. However, last meeting that we had, a roundtable discussion with uh, with the superintendent and the curriculum, there was a a report that uh, there's been textbooks that are are um, due, these are prior obligations, and uh, and then based also on the amount, the dollar amount in which um, they're not going to be able to spend all the money in purchasing new textbooks. And I wanted to ask the superintendent how he feels about the split that we did here, is that to assist uh, GPSS in paying its its uh, prior obligations of textbooks. And uh, and originally, we were thinking of one point five million. And then for purchasing of new textbook was two million, that was recommended by OFB. However, uh, m- um, Mister Superintendent, what I'd like to do here is amend it, and I want to um, get your um, opinion, whether it be meeting, of course, the department's needs here, is that on page nine, on the purchasing of the of new materials and replacing materials, rather than the two million dollars, is to reduce that to one point five. And then for you to be able to pay for prior year's textbook obligations is to increase that amount from one point five to two million.
Senator, you're re- You're referring to uh, page nine, line two? And then what's the uh, other bits? Okay, so on section two of uh, this bill, or this part and this chapter, you want to amend simultaneously two sections. One to lower on page ten, uh, section two, line twenty-seven. Instead of the uh, one million five hundred thousand, you want it to? And then on the uh, page nine, on the second line of page nine, right? One point five.
Uh, Senator, for the prior obligation, um, we're looking at two. That two point six, not counting the uh, reorders. Okay, two point six for prior obligation. And one, instead of one point five, it would be one point three for textbook reorders. However, just let me clarify that the legislature was very instrumental in extending the uh, the textbook adop- adoption from five years to seven years. So uh, it gives us the opportunity to be able to maximize our use of the textbooks. So uh, instead of three point five every fiscal year, there will be a fiscal year when we don't need to order textbooks.
So so can I get this, ma- Mister um, Chairman? Then I'm going to have to amend again, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, but staying within the same dollar amount of three point five. Sorry.
So what do you want? You want to withdraw your amendment?
I want to withdraw, yeah, I'll withdraw my amendment and then-
Any objection, having Senator Wampat withdraw her amendment? Without a dip, objections, so ordered.
Okay, so on page then nine, where it's to amend that to, the two million to one point three million dollars?
This is on page nine?
Nine, line two. And then on page ten, line twenty-seven, it'll be two point two million dollars. That's the total then of three point five.
Okay, does everybody have a, you know, understand the amendment? Okay. Okay. Um. He he, okay, on the amendment, Senator Simisso?
Mister Superintendent, what you're saying is that um past due uh accounts, you have two point six million dollars is what you need?
Yes sir.
And these are to the vendors, right? What's the age of that uh uh? How far back is that two point six?
Two thousand five and two thousand six fiscal years.
So two thousand, back two thousand five fiscal year, how much is that in two thousand five?
It's about approximately five hundred and two thousand.
What I'm trying to 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 do here is um I I wanted to try to make it very clear that we increased it from one point five to two point two. Um to make it clear and I'm not sure if it's um clear here in terms of uh the two thousand five and two thousand six. Appropriate from general fund, the public school purchase of, that's what we're talking about in eleven for purchases of uh, you say not to pay back the debt. On on page eleven, is it? It's appropriate from the general fund from the uh for from fiscal year two thousand eight to the Guam Public School System for the purchase of textbook, EEP readers collateral and so forth. Mister Superintendent, may I, I'm I'm not sure if it's saying that we're paying for outstanding debts. This is almost the same, you know, English as um in page nine. But on page nine, line uh one, fi- fiscal year two thousand eight, the sum of two million is appropriate from the general fund from fiscal year two thousand and nine. So we're appropriating on fiscal year uh two thousand and eight in anticipation of of funds in the two thousand and nine. That's advanced purchases of the books, right? But then on page eleven, if I, am I understanding it correctly, that the two point two is to go back and pay your bills?
Right, yeah.
But is the language on it, is that's what it says? I mean, is that where this is? You look puzzled, I'm just trying to find out, maybe I'm not reading it right. Shall be available for prior years textbook application or is that for all vendors?
All vendors.
Yeah, so then this this is not only for just textbook vendors, right? You're talking about all vendors?
No, it's only for various kinds of textbooks.
It's only for textbook vendors?
Right, yeah.
For prior years and the prior years is two thousand five and two thousand six?
Yes.
Okay, so when we come back, um we I won't I won't be getting the same amount request to pay back back debts for two thousand five and two thousand six?
You're right, if we get the money, Senator.
Yeah, ha- have you been appropriated in the past for back for payback of back orders? You've never gotten any, for the record, the uh GPSS has never received any funding for the appropriations uh to pay back those back debts from two thousand five and two thousand six?
If you're talking about just the textbooks, no, we have not. We've only been able to use monies for our retirement and that's the prior obligation, but if you're just talking about textbooks, no.
No, there's not, so this is uh but this is out there since for task to fiscal year.
Okay, thank you Senator Simisso.
There there were there were appropriations, but the cash, the allotment, um we did not receive the allotment. For two thousand five, we are short by two million dollars.
Okay Senator Kavu, this is on the Wampat's amendment.
Yes, Mister Chair, uh I I'm gonna request that we could take a minute recess just for, I I want to assist the Senator Wampat. But obviously, have you noticed how we've done the appropriations for textbooks? Again, it was clearly noted how and we've we use this as a as a budgeting tool. Because of the order and the amount of time it takes for for uh for receipt of product as well as payment out on invoice. We're we're talking about two separate fiscal years here. And uh I I'd like to, if we can just call offer for one minute recess so I can work with a with a chairman of the Education Committee to try to help her in her needs. But then at the same time, ensure that we keep a balanced budget.
Okay, minute recess. Sen- let me see, uh Senator Kavu, you still have the floor?
Uh Mister Chair, can I relinquish? There there was a there was a, we solved the issue and I think Senator Wampat is is gonna make a motion that will solve the issues.
Okay, Senator Wampat.
Thank you Mister Chairman, this will be real quick. Uh after considerable uh discussion with uh GPSS and the NOFB Chair. I've decided to go ahead and withdraw then uh the amendments for both uh page nine and uh ten and eleven.
What do you mean minority chair?
I'm going to withdraw.
You're the minority chair?
No, the I I said the OFB uh Chair.
Oh, okay. Okay, is there any objection to Wampat's uh withdrawing her amendment without objections ordered? It's still back at two million dollars on page nine and still one million five on page ten. Okay, Senator Simisso, on the bill.
Of course on the bill. No, I I uh you know withdrawing so that it be uh it'll be clear. I just wanted to to um not so much uh uh, yeah, I'd like to make an amendment. If we go to page uh. The paragraph starts on page ten, line twenty-six. Okay, what I'd like to do is a very simple uh amendment. On page eleven, line one, dollars at the one point five is appropriated from the general fund from fiscal year two thousand eight revenues to the Guam Public School System, period. Okay, then delete for the purchase of textbook all the way down to line seven Guam. Delete for all the way down to line seven Guam, period. And just add in thi- this amount shall be available to pay for prior year textbook obligation, it's very, very clear. Okay?
Okay, everybody understood the uh amendment made by Senator Simisso? That starting on line fourteen, right? Line two?
Page eleven, just deleting uh on line two.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, line two, page eleven. Okay, uh after the word Guam Public School System, put a period.
Period.
Okay, delete everything all the way down to the government of Guam, uh that is on line seven. And leave them the word this amount shall be available to pay pro- for prior years textbook obligations.
Yes.
Okay, on that motion, Senator Pangalina, on the Simisso motion.
Thank you very much Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, the I I just uh the only concern that I may have is that you're amending public law twenty-eight one forty-nine on that. And so if the. What what happens to um the authorization then back in two thousand seven for the expenditure of those funds? Uh if you are now amending twenty-eight one one forty-nine. Um you know, I was looking at that and um the way that that I thought. Anyway, that's that's my question. My question then brings the question of brings that those prior appropriations in twenty-eight one forty-nine, uh you know, for that purpose. Um and the the idea here is that we just want to be able to pay these prior year obligations, right? And and so rather than because the amendment or the appropriation is coming out from a fiscal year two thousand and eight funds. Has nothing to do with the prior appropriations that were already made. It's not an addition, it's not a subtraction and so forth. It's just amend section two and just say, rather than amending the public law, just say exactly what he's saying. So you would make an amendment to to not, so that it's not an amendment to public law twenty-eight one forty-eight. It's an appropriation from two thousand and eight funds, so it should be just a straight out appropriation language. And that would be to delete lines twenty-six and twenty-seven uh of the uh. And the title of the section so that you're not amending public law twenty-eight one forty-nine. You just appropriate two million dollars or whatever the final number is from two thousand eight revenues to the public school system. And then this amount will be for the payment of prior year obligations of textbooks, you know, so that.
Okay, it's be- it's becoming very complicated.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ca- call a recess because this is an amendment to the amendment.
Right.
Okay, so Senator Pangalina, please so prepare your amendment.
In fact, it makes it even clearer, it's just straight up, yeah. That's it.
Committee of the House back in session. Uh. There was an amendment that was gonna be made by Senator Pangalina, but uh after consultation, he uh decided not to make it. But the pending amendment that is still on the floor is the amendment made by Senator Simisso, this is on page eleven. Starting from line two. Put a period and after the public public school system, period. And delete everything thereafter until you get to line seven. And it says government of Guam, put a period there, you know, just delete all of that. And it reads this amount shall be available to pay for prior years of textbook application. That's it.
It could be, it should, it could be available, use. Okay, okay. Uh Mister Mister Chairman, I again uh on my own amendment, I'm speaking on it.
On on line eight?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Uh there is a suggestion that I amend and delete the word on line eight. Uh substitute the word available, redact it out and put shall be used.
Everybody got that?
Thank you Mister Chairman.
On the amendment to the amendment, Vice Senator Simisso, no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
On the main amendment, that's amended, without objection, so ordered. Uh Senator Pangalina, on the uh on the on section, section. Chapter two.
Thank you very much Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I have an amendment that's um that's a little bit more encompassing than than uh what is contained in section one. But basically, um what this does Mister Speaker is the funding source for the department or the Guam Public School System, of course, comes from general fund obligations for general fund revenues. As well as special fund revenues. And one of the special fund revenues that have been set up by law is the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund. And that, of course, is uh monies collected from the real estate taxes. And by law, Mister Speaker, all of the money in that fund should really be devoted to public education for facilities upgrades and maintenance and operations. Um and what we've had is that in the bill, we see where this revenue source, which is supposed to be dedicated to public education. Is being used to fund other departments and agencies of the government of Guam. And so what this amendment does, Mister Speaker, is it is it amends the budget bill so that whenever there is an appropriation. Made from the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund to another department of age or agency. That um that that amendment is is reversed and placed back and and devoted to the Guam Public School System. Uh and then whatever is is being used to fund, uh and then the general fund appropriation from uh for the Guam Public School System is reduced by that amount. So it's a it's a bookkeeping thing, but it's also a legal thing in my mind. Uh number one, I think we know that real estate taxes are usually paid and we've been able to collect and we've seen the continual increases. So I want to be able to follow that law basically. And so it doesn't change the total appropriation to the Department of Education, but it reduces this dependency on the general fund to a degree. Uh and that would be to the tune of nine to ten million do- nine, almost ten million dollars. Because that's how much of the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund is being used to fund other uh departments and agencies. So it would reduce the general fund appropriation uh from from the for the Guam Public School System from one hundred and seventy-three million dollars to the to to one hundred and sixty-five million. But then would appropriate uh the different that difference of nine million eight hundred ninety-one thousand six eighty-three uh to come from the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund. And it would then be given to the Department of Education. And so the bill basically uh or the amendment uh does that in in all sections of the budget bill where that appears.
Yeah, Senator Pangalina, I'm going to divide the question. And the only one that the Chair's gonna entertain will be item one, the one that says on page seven, amend section subsection A.
Yes.
So I would div- divide the question. Okay, everybody understand that? Okay, we're talking only about the first amendment, huh? Senator Kavu, on the Pangalina amendment.
Yeah, thank you Mister Chair. Mister Chair, uh I'm going to request and move that we take a couple of minutes recess. I've talked to my OFB Director. I I I see Senator Pangalina's made a very uh, he's looking towards balancing the appropriation. Uh if you could just allow our office to do a couple of minutes to to reconcile, uh cause obviously we have the Territorial Education Facilities Fund and the general fund. And I'm sure he's he's done his calculations accurately, but just because of there's many moves that are here. If you can allow my office just a few minutes just to reconcile the numbers and and I beg the indulgence of the uh the body.
No objection to that.
Okay, so order, we're in recess.
On item number one on the Senator Pangalina's amendment, Senator Pangalina?
Thank you very much Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, after um a consultation with the Office of Finance and Budget Staff to ensure that.